Beginning of our work session for the City Council for the City of Trinidad. On the items that we have on the agenda for consideration, we are going to switch subject number two Trinidad Animal Shelter update to number one. Echotech is waiting for another person to be present before Ms. Myers makes her presentation. So we'll start with the Trinidad Animal Shelter update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Hi, guys.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So I'll start. And who did that?
Yes, but wait. Introduce yourselves.
I just figured that everybody knows me. Just wait.
I'm not going to talk to you.
I know, I know. I'm Detective Sergeant Lay with the Trinidad Police Department.
My name is Pamela Briscoe with the Trinidad Animal Shelter.
Animal Shelter.
Animal Shelter.
Yes. Okay. And as we're getting this set up, just so you know, all the animals that are photographed in our presentation are available for adoption or were at the shelter. So if you see some, someone, a furry friend of interest, then just let us know.
That's so unfair.
Perfect. It's perfect. I'm gonna stand up here. So I don't know if you all are aware, but the city has put the animal shelter on the city's website. And so Pam has created a mission statement for the animal shelter, as you see here. And once our email's back up, I can email this presentation. So I'll let you do that while you have it.
Okay. So for our six month update, transitioning was tremendous amount of labor and sense of work for everybody that's been involved over there. We have both of our local veterinarians as our vet of record. For PACPA, we're required to have a vet of record, so we have both local vets as our vet of record. We're working with our local animal groups as well, pals. We've been working a lot with our traps. We do the TNR program, so we partnered up with them. And a lot of times they come across neonate kittens that don't have a mother, so then we step into there and then bring them in and put them out to foster, since we are the only local animal group that has a PACPA license to offer the foster program. And then we've also teamed up with the Colorado Pet Pantry to help assist our community with pet food and supplies, leashes, anything that's needed, basically. And then we're also collaborating with the Walsenburg Animal Shelter. Their director, Jessica Howard, they're much smaller than us, but they're still able to help us move some dogs around that we can't normally move in Trinidad and vice versa for them in Walsenburg. So our current staffing, we have four full-time positions, myself, the shelter manager, a vet tech, we have an adoption coordinator who runs the front desk, and then our transfer volunteer coordinator, and she also serves as our foster coordinator as well. And then we have six part-time employees as well, two brand-new added to that group, so we're at eight now, one being a part-time vet tech as well, so they can help us on the weekends. And then we're still looking to try to fill like a full-time lead kennel position, just to help maintain the care and the expectations that are required per state law. Our current numbers as of today, in-house, we have 16 dogs and 22 cats. Those are the numbers where we'd like to try to stay to keep us at a good number with PACPA. In foster, we have 19 kittens and five dogs, for a total of 62 animals as a whole number. And we have 10 foster families, local foster families in Trinidad that help us out with the neonates and ill animals as well. So our year-to-date, we have 71 adoptions, we've transferred out 80 animals to our transfer partners, we've transferred three animals in with Walsenburg, we've had three euthanasias, we've returned 39 animals to their owners, we've taken in 218 animals since the beginning of the year, 50 of those being owner surrenders, 89 strays, and 73 seized custodies. So here is the analysis.
So I'll take this part. So we took Noah's Ark numbers from 2023, so that's all of 2023, and then put our numbers this last seven months against it. So obviously, there's a little bit of a skew there. We're not, it's not a full year of representation of what we're able to do in a full year. But you can see, in just seven months, we've already surpassed the transfer out, what was happening before, and we're not even, we're halfway through the year, and we superseded what they did last year. Return to owner, I think we're on pace to about match that. Surrenders, as you can see, we had more surrenders than we had, than they had last year. And then transfer ins, they took 22, we've only taken three this year. Couple of other numbers, euthanasias, five from Noah's last year, three thus far for us. We had nine animals pass away so far. It was really sad. We had two batches of kittens that both kittens sets passed away. It was really, actually, one of them was my foster kittens, which was really sad. And then we had a mom, a mom dog that lost one out of nine?
Yep.
Nine puppies. So it was actually, it kind of happened all at once. No admin missing, and each organization had one DOA arrival. The last numbers that we have to show you, as you can see, it looks like adoptions are gonna be down for us this year. Noah's Ark had 259 adoptions, we are only at 71 as of the year. I think our strays are gonna be about the same, but our seized custody, just for the half a year, we're gonna be probably past what Noah's Ark had the year prior. So it kind of just gives you a little bit of perspective of where we stand seven months or into the year, as compared to what they had. Really good things that have happened so far is our PACPA inspection. We passed with flying colors. There was two very minor, minor issues. I think it was like there was one grooming leash that wasn't correct and...
And we had to paint it to it.
And there was a two-by-four that wasn't painted. So the staff really worked their tails off, no pun intended, to get it up to where it needed to be. All the staff, the full-time staff has done training. We want to expand on that training. They've done pet of the week on Facebook. We've also worked really hard to create new flyers and new brochures. We had to come up with all new documents. It was quite the undertaking when it first, when we first took it over. Pam was instrumental in getting the 15 new kennels put up. Before, the outdoor kennels were, they caused problems for the animals, problems for the staff, they were unkept, it looked really disastrous back there. It looks so beautiful if you go out to the outdoor kennels now. It's really great. And it's gonna look even better when they pour that concrete pad. They've reestablished their connection with other transfer partners, so we can transfer more animals out, and they're trying to host and participate in events throughout the community to just keep their name out there. Do you want to talk about this?
So these are some of the projects and events that we've done in the first seven months. We participated in the Santa Fe Trail Days, it was a great success for us. We had a kitten baby shower, we received all kinds of generous donations from the community, it was great. The outdoor kennel volunteer day, we had a lot of people come out and just volunteer their whole day for us to make sure that the dogs would each have their own individual pen. We celebrated National Rescue Dog Day with Noah's Ark on Main Street, where we collabed with Exa-18 on a literacy program for kiddos, if they read a book to a dog, they got free game time. And then we also had the kids come and do some incredible murals at the shelter. It has breathed so much life in there, and it's just warm and inviting. If you haven't had time to see it, please come by and see it, it came out great. And so, and then upcoming events, we're planning a dodgeball tournament at the community center. It's, we want everybody to dress up, have teams, and just go have a great day with our families, make it a fun sports day for everybody. And I'm sure plenty more to go, but that's what we have planned and have done thus far. Here's the murals, the cat is in the cat meet greet, and then we have the dog mural and the dog meet greet.
The kids came in and sketched and did these within like two, it was like a week, two weeks. They did such a phenomenal job, and the pictures definitely don't do it justice. It's really great job. The clicker's not working, I promise, I'm not just making you stare at those great pictures.
So a couple of setbacks and issues that we're having is staffing, making sure that we have enough staff to take care of all the animals. They all require a timeframe of how much care that each individual animal receives, so having the appropriate staffing for everybody. And then capacity issues, the shelter is very small in terms of 15 dogs and 20 cats with three ideal numbers. We could turn that out in a day. So we're always at capacity issues. We have to turn away between 10 and 20 animals on a daily basis. So we have a lot more animals coming in and a lot less adoptions, even with adoption fees being dropped. And we're seeing a lot of county, we get a lot of county animals, a lot of county calls to receive the animals in because there's, there's not help for those folks out there. And so I'm trying to, we need dedicated space for animal control and law enforcement officers when they have to go out and do a seize or anything like that, and oftentimes we run into some issues with that. And then the building signage, that was, that was a task to get that completed, but we have gotten that completed. I'm actually picking the sign up tomorrow, so that will be put up. And then the last is just the financial burden of veterinary services. The rates are quite high for the amount of strays that we see, and the requirement to adopt these animals out is to have them spayed, neutered, and vaccinated and all those things. So getting the numbers in and then having those services provided is kind of a setback too for us.
Do you want to ask a question now, or do you want to wait till the end?
Oh, no, that's fine.
So I think our goals going forward is obviously, one of the big ones is to pour that concrete pad for the outdoor kennels and put the turf in. We also want to look at the municipal ordinance and address any of the downfalls that, and maybe any changes that are needed. Obviously, Noah's Ark is listed everywhere in our municipal ordinance, so that needs to be addressed first and foremost. Pam and I kind of went through it, but I think it's gonna take a little bit more time, so that's kind of a fall project. Pam would really like to see, and I think it would be great to have a vet on staff or volunteer, it would help them get the vaccine truck up and going, save money for the community and money for the shelter. And it also would save a lot of time on spay and neutering and money as well. She has a great idea too, about doing a little store inside of the shelter, so when somebody comes to adopt a kitten, you can just pick up your litter box and the food and the little bedding and the little t-shirt to go with them. So that's down the road, but definitely a goal, and it could be a potential source of income. The city gave the shelter the travel vehicle from City Hall, which is great, and they've been using it, but when they do transfers of bigger dogs or multiple dogs, then we're using the tourism bus to go up. Or when we have to have multiple animals go over for spay and neutering, it's multiple trips. So if we could upgrade that to some kind of van, that would be ideal. Obviously, these are goals. We're grateful for the vehicle that we have now. We'd like to garner more volunteers and foster families. I know we have 10 right now, but the need is always there. And then just continue to engage with the community and do outreach and more educational programs. Do you want to do things we need, or do you want me to just?
So some of the things that we're still in need of is additional building to house some of the stray dogs, our additional space for law enforcement cases. I would love to see an outdoor catio put in, so the cats also have an outdoor space that's protected for them. The dryer vents, updating the laundry facility to meet our demands. We do incredible amount of laundry, that is all blankets and towels, so it's the heaviest, the hardest to dry. So we are in the works of that.
Mayor, Council, so I just want to talk about that a little bit. Pam, you donated a washer or a couple of dryers?
A dryer, yes.
Yeah, well, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
And what we found out is where they designed the dryer room in the facility doesn't have ventilation, so we're working to find the funding to make that happen. So sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to point that out, but thank you for that donation.
Sure. And then, so there's still a few issues around the building to be addressed. I have been working closely with the building inspector, John Wilkerson. He's been coming out and offering incredible amounts of help and helping us out. It's just a lot of maintenance-type things that maybe haven't been maintained for a while, and so now it's kind of a little bit of an issue. And to be frank with you, I don't know, I don't know anything about constructions. I just know that there seems to be, the building walls are starting to get cracks in them, so we're trying to get those issues worked out. And then washable and water-resistant furniture for our meet and greet rooms where the murals are done, as well as our front common area to update that space. And then the weeds around the facility, we would love to have concrete set up all the way in the back, it would help us with puppy season. Harvo is found within the soil, and so if we can keep puppies off of the soil and just on concrete, we can avoid a lot of those types of problems. And then the weeds also pose problems because some of the weeds are toxic and noxious for the animals when they're around them, and it's a PACPA violation for us. So and then just continued support from the county, council, and city staff and the community has been, we've been received very well thus far, so we just hope to continue to have that
I think that it goes without saying, John has been a huge advocate for the shelter. He's there a lot and helps out, even on his own time. Blaine's also been over and helped out quite a bit, along with Rich Gallegos and then Rich Gonzalez. We have some pretty steadfast volunteers that should be recognized, Kathy, Margaret, Glenn, Amy, and Mike. And then the community sport, support. Also, the family and friends of the people who work at the shelter have been phenomenal, especially Pam's kiddos, who are like the muscle and do a lot of the heavy lifting. And I would just like to say, because I can, Pam has done more than anybody at the shelter that I've seen since I started volunteering, and she's been so generous out of her own pocket to make things happen, so that we could be out in the community like the community events. And then the dryer, she also takes care of the staff, we do staff meetings every week, so I don't know, it kind of feels like I want to go work at the shelter, because she's an awesome, she's an awesome leader. I can't speak highly enough of Pam, so we're so lucky to have her.
Bravo.
You're welcome. I like to put you on the spot. This is how you can connect.
Yeah.
I know, I know, it's age-wise, so it's a year or less. No, this is how you can connect with the animal shelter. Any animals that we have available for adoption are on that 24 pet connect, because everything is fed through that pet point site that the shelter operates on. Questions?
I was wondering, what's the difference in the number of adoptions? That was the only thing that was strikingly different for Noah's Ark.
You know, I think that it's not a Trinidad problem. It seems to me, in all the networking that I do, it's a nationwide issue. Adoptions are down across the nation, surrenders are up across the nation and adoptions are down. I don't have an honest answer as to why, other than people just are not adopting right now. It seems like COVID happened, everybody wanted pets, and then when COVID kind of went away and went back to life, there wasn't the time or need for their said pets. That's an opinion that I have.
Pam, can you talk about the transfers and we're seeing from other states?
I receive a lot of transfers in, and it's a problem where a lot of other states believe that Colorado is a no-kill state. And so they will come from Mexico, which is a very high-kill state, as well as Texas, and they want to bring their animals to us with the impression that we, as a state, just do not euthanize. And oftentimes, when they're told that we can't take them in from out of state, you would need a health surfer and all these things, they're left in parking lots, and that's all of my transfer partners are dealing with those situations too, because if, when I tell them no, they go up the line. We're seeing astronomical numbers from out of state.
That's really interesting, the way they got that impression.
I don't know either. Maybe no-kill Colorado is a very large organization and wonderful, but it gives the impression that it's a no-kill Colorado.
But you all are doing a spectacular job, and Detective Lay, you deserve a lot of credit for that.
Right, right.
Absolutely do.
Sure.
Anyway, thank you, fully do.
Thank you for taking on the managerial position, appreciate it. That was kind of related, my question, how do you handle the inundation of drop-offs? Because you already filled the capacity, so you said transferring. What happens if in one week you have 15, 20 animals that are dropped off? Immediately, do you send them somewhere, or do you have to feed them and take care of them until you have networked with other agencies?
Generally speaking, it's a five-day hold, so we are every day, we are trying to make transfers with all of the kids that have already surpassed their five-day hold, where we're in a position that we can move them to another organization, we know that they're not owned or claimed by someone. So that's just an everyday thing, that we're on the phone and hope for the best and make great relationships, so that we do have those capabilities to transfer out, to have open space in the event that I can't take anything in, I don't have any single open kennel, I have to send them to Pueblo, and we'll have to call Pueblo, they have larger organizations, they have smaller organizations, and we go from there. But a lot of times, I will see that same animal come right back.
So are you still asking, and do you seek volunteers on a, like, what's the protocol? If somebody wants to volunteer four or five hours, do you have to do a background check?
They do, so kind of stop by, you can go to the city website and download a volunteer app, print that out, and bring it here. You're more than welcome to come by the shelter, we have volunteer apps there, you can leave it with me, you can drop it here at the city drop box, any of those things, we're always looking for extra hands.
Thank you.
Same, thank you very much for doing what you're doing, and I think a lot of those little things that you need to C-MAN, all that stuff, I think we could get together with the city and talk to them and get that done, because I think that's really important, and I think you're doing a great job, and hope to continue that we can get it going more, get more volunteers. But I think if you get with the city manager, talk to him and get this bent done, you already said you looked into that and the C-MAN now, and especially the cracks in the building, because we just had that building redone, and we need to find out what's up, an issue with that. And again, thank you very much, both of you, you've really done a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, and thank you for that councilman shoe. I've been talking with Pam quite a bit, so budgetarily, we weren't anticipating absorbing this this year, so we're trying to figure out the funding for staff and everything to get us through the remainder of the year. But I've talked to Cheryl, and we want to look at 2025 specifically, when we go through our budget cycle, to make sure we're doing as much as we can to get them what they need. So I just wanted to point that out, but I appreciate that.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So we are taking animals from the county?
They, I don't take them in, but they come in.
Oh, they still?
They still manage to come in, or they'll be dropped in our parking lot, they'll, they're found in the streets of Trinidad running around.
Have we had a conversation with the county at all about contributing funding?
Yeah, we have.
Since we, since we, since we just took it over, or was that previous?
That was previous, but our understanding is their, their answer is a hard no. Pam can kind of speak to that, she was there, she was not the director when these conversations had happened, but county was dropping off a lot of animals at our facility, and we basically said, well, you need to fund if you're gonna drop them off, and they said no. And so that is our understanding of their perspective. Happy to get with Pam and reach out to them again to see if there's still some opportunities there, but it also is a concern, maybe Pam can speak to this more than I can, but the amount of animals in the county, I'm not sure our shelter really has the capacity for that, so we really want to prioritize, you know, City of Trinidad over opening it up to outside entities.
Which makes sense, but if they want to collaborate with us, would we be open to expanding if they would be willing to or something?
We will revisit that conversation, Counselor.
Cool, that sounds great. You had already answered my question, I seen on there, because that was the same thought I had about putting a vet on staff and actually contracting out, because I think that's one of our biggest expenses, is that sort of, you know. The other thing that I was kind of curious about, what about the kids at the school? Do we do any education about caring for animals by volunteering, since they all require community service hours now?
Yeah, so we are, I work closely with GoL, as well as Trinidad High, for the kids to come over and do their community service. And then we started a kids' corner that's down on Sundays for young youths, to start teaching them how to respect animals, how to kind of notice if an animal is not enjoying the pets, not to get right in their face, and just to understand them a little more, and make it fun too, so they'll make some dog treats and some cat toys, so while they're having fun while they learn.
Well, thank you for that, I appreciate it. And the thoughts, I think we asked about how do you become a foster family and stuff like that, and that information, you conveled, so.
It is, and so you would fill out a volunteer application, as well as a foster application. We come to your home, we do an inspection to make sure that you have a safe home and that you know how to properly care for the species that you're taking care of.
And that's in county offices.
It is.
Thank you.
I'd like to say first, like, you guys, shelter always needs work, right? This is my, this is a personal question, I don't know if you guys tracked this, what is the recycling, the recycle after adoption? Do you see more pets come back in from previous adoptions? Is there a?
It's quite rare that we get a returned pet that's been adopted, but it does happen occasionally. The idea is not to do the same-day adoption, but to do meet and greets and make sure that they have time to really have a...
Do you track that, or?
We do, we do phone calls. We'll do every two-week updates for the first, like, three, four weeks, we'll call and just check to see if everything's working out well and offer any assistance. And then we have dog behavioralists and trainers that can also help work with us if there is any sort of behavioral problem that's popping up once they go home, and that's free of charge for the doctor as well.
Pam, do you have a return policy, for lack of a better term?
So the return policy is always, if you can't give this animal a good home, it's not a good fit, then absolutely bring them back to us at any point. If it's after 30 days, the adoption fees are kept. If it's before that 30-day mark and there's nothing that we can do to make that a happy adoption, then we absolutely return the fees as well as just begin with that.
Good policy.
Yeah.
Mayor, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to, thank you so much for what you do, I think it's an emotionally really tough job, so. So you mentioned a number, and it really just, I mean, boggles the mind, in my opinion. I think you said it's potentially 20 animals a day, or did I mishear that?
No.
So, I mean, that's a really, obviously, really significant number. Does that 20 a day include out-of-state transfers, or is that over and above?
That would be over and above. Most of the out-of-staters will just show up at our doorstep, those phone calls that we are turning away are city residents and our own county residents. Sometimes we do get them from our neighboring county, but that is primarily just us.
So I mean, I think I know the answer to this, but do we know, so if people show up there, they say, oh, this animal's a surrender, and you can't take it, what happens to that animal? Do we know? I mean...
I don't always know that answer. I don't always know that answer.
I mean, a lot of times, it'd probably translate to a stray pickup, potentially.
Most times, that's the way that it happens for us. They will then become a stray and enter the unit.
So last week, when I was there, when Pam was taking her vacation, I witnessed the staff, there was a gentleman that came over the counter and wanted to relinquish this mommy cat and five babies, and this older male cat that was from out in the county, and the staff was trying to give him resources, and he's saying that he's just gonna do something to the animal. Well, the staff, you know, they stepped in and they took that animal, because they didn't want, if you have somebody that's saying something that they're gonna be negative or hurt, harm the animal in some way, the staff will step in, and they, I mean, they'll move things around and ask for more fosters. I've got kittens at my house, so if you guys need to be a foster, it's so much fun. But it really is, actually, that's how I got involved with the shelter. But it really is actually, that's how I got involved with the shelter was fostering. But kittens, not kids. But, so they do, they will make like certain, you know, depending on the situation, but they're turning away phone calls, I mean, constantly, all day.
Again, thank you, I have no further questions.
Hey Pam, can you explain what no kill means as far as the shelter is concerned? Because I don't think people understand what no kill really means.
So no kill is generally going to be you don't euthanize for space, but there's not such a thing as no kill. There are behaviors that sometimes you cannot train out, that you have a vicious animal and the state tells you, you're not allowed to have a vicious animal that is attacking the staff or general public or another animal. And then you have illness as well. We've been faced with all of those things at our shelter. It's part of animal welfare, it's the ugly side of animal welfare, it's the part that nobody likes, but it happens. There's no, there's no such thing as no kill in my opinion, I mean, it's just a requirement in animal welfare.
And Pam, just for full disclosure, if we transfer an animal out, we have no guarantee though of anything, is that correct?
Correct. I can't decide what another shelter does, I do, do my due diligence and I record check any partner that we have and I look at their statistics and I see how many adoptions versus how many euthanages they may have had to have and what those look like and if the numbers don't make sense and the youth numbers not where it should be, then we don't partner with that organization. But that's, that's the best that you can do in the situation and they're not required to give us any information back whether that animal has been adopted or not.
You seem to make it sound somewhat easy, but I know it is not, I, you know, I've been at the animal shelter many times when I was on the board, but I think it might be, you know, I think about this a lot, because even though I'm not actively there, that's a passion of mine and I, Jennifer, Jennifer and I have been talking about, we need to get on these ordinances and we need to start cracking down on people. Because if you look at the Crime Watch report, I bet you fifty percent of the calls are for stray animals.
Yeah, and spayed neutered.
Yeah. Have you ever, has anybody given you any indication that they would like to form another volunteer group specific for the Trinidad Animal Shelter? An organized group that we, we could get them together to help you with some of these fundraising, is that something that you as a director would be interested in?
I would be absolutely interested in that. We haven't had anybody come forward with that, but we would be interested in that. Any help would be of great help.
If we could, I know Noah's Ark is in a different position now, but I'm thinking if you could get your own organization specific for the animal shelter, they could do some of this stuff, this fundraising work for you that you wouldn't have to worry about, you know, maybe help you, I would be more than willing myself to do that. So I just say I appreciate what you do is an understatement because I know how hard and I know how dedicated everybody at the shelter is and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pam, where can we get a bunch of those t-shirts?
Yeah.
If you haven't been to the animal shelter since the city has taken it over, you really should go by there, see what animals are available for adoption, check out the new murals, who's ahead of the staff, it's, it's a great place. I mean, you could keep it if you want, it's the only thing that's on there. Thanks.
Ms. Myers, is your individuals here? Okay, our second presentation is from the ECO tip, Linda Rose Myers and I'm sorry, I don't know the other names.
Dan Parker.
If you want to come up and introduce or do you want to?
So we're going to stay from here because we've got stuff, the documents, site maps, stuff like that. So thank you so much for making time for us, this is Dan Parker, our chief technical officer, chemical engineer, I'm so lucky that he's part of the team because he's probably one of the most respected in his field for biofuels. He's been involved with, I'm sorry, I'm going to embarrass you, he's been involved in just about every successful biofuels project that you've heard of, either as providing an independent feasibility study or some other aspect of it. So I'm very, very fortunate to have him involved. So thank you so much for making time for us, I already love your little town, I love the architecture downtown, I hope it never changes and, and just as, my name is Linda Rose Myers, I, I don't want to do a darn thing to change it except to tread carefully, as I said to David Barak in our meeting earlier today, and, and work closely with all of you to benefit the community. So that's just where we are. So, and thank you so much, we've gotten some wonderful help from every one of you. Former mayor Phil Rico has been unbelievable, so I, I really believe we've made the right choice in, in selecting Trinidad for this project. So in case anybody doesn't know why we're here, it's because the forest fires in, in Colorado are out of control and because I grew up in Colorado Springs and forest fires were rare, but, but now they're, you can't drive anywhere this time of year and not see the smoke. And so there's a tremendous need on the part of the Forest Service to get the dead and diseased trees out of the forests, which if you drive from here east, westward through the Rio Grande, you'll see mile after mile of standing dead trees and it just breaks my heart because they're just waiting to go up, you know? So Dan Dallas, who was formerly the supervisor of, of that forest, is now in charge of the entire region too, bioresources, and he's probably our biggest champion because he's desperate to get that stuff out of there. So it, it's a massive job, we can't do it on our own and we really hope that this community will be our partner. So, so here's our plan, so we're going to, we're going to focus on the Rio Grande National Forest first because they're most desperate and motivated and Dan Dallas spent two million dollars doing a very, very exhaustive analysis of where the material is that needs to be removed, what type of wood, how much of it, and how many years of supply it would be for a company like ours. He was just hoping somebody like us would come along. So we're going to be focusing on that first and then we will look at other state and federal and private forests. So the, so woody biomass will be transported from the Rio Grande to a staging area in Montevista, at, excuse me, and there we will process the material and store it safely and then it will be shipped to our plant on an as needed basis. So we will be feeding the biomass to a high temperature gasifier to produce syn gas and after cleanup of the syn gas, it will be sent to a Fisher Trope gas to liquids process where it will first produce a crude, a bio crude and that is further refined to produce South sustainable aviation fuel.
Linda Rose, I'm going to interrupt you just real quick, anybody who wants to come watch this, feel free to grab a chair and you're welcome to sit over here if you want to see the PowerPoint presentation, apologies, we don't have it up on the, the main screens, but you're, you're more than welcome.
So Dan is next, he's going to talk about the specific engineering processes and all.
I'll stand up. Thank you for, for hearing us out on this and I'm glad I made it, I came straight from the outback in Australia to Trinidad, so it's been a long couple of days, but glad to be here. Our technology is what's called a gas to liquids technology. It basically takes the forest biomass, we'll chip it into a manageable size for both densification for transport as well as for feeding into the gasification process. And what gasification does is, is it's kind of like a controlled form of combustion, it heats the material with just a very small amount of oxygen, not enough for it to burn, but just enough for it to break down. So we break the biomass down basically into hydrogen, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide and ash. So that, that's what comes on at the gasification portion of the process is the three gases and those three gases combined, we call syn gas or synthesis gas. And the ash, of course, is, is taken out like any other boiler and generally used as an amendment either in making concrete or as a soil amendment. Being a biomass, it's, it's low in heavy metals and other toxic materials, so it's generally good for application to either forest land or even agricultural purposes. The syn gas that's produced goes through a cleaning process, we remove the CO2 from it, we wash it to make sure it's just pure hydrogen and carbon monoxide. And then we put it into a process that's called a gas to liquids process or Fisher Trope is a technical name, named after the two scientists that developed it right around the end of World War One, it's been in use for just a little over a hundred years now. South Africa was actually one of the first countries to, to put in Fisher Trope processes back right at the, the end of World War Two, but it's becoming more and more common. What it does is it sort of creates a crude oil, it takes the hydrogen and the carbon monoxide, combines them back together into hydrocarbons and produces this sort of a mixed crude. We then take normal refining processes that any petroleum refinery would have and we refine this crude into diesel fuel and jet fuel. So the, the plant itself is sort of a combination between a power plant and, and a mini refinery, a fairly large facility and fairly complex in terms of the various operations within the facility. The gasification process also produces a lot of excess heat, that heat is used throughout the process and then whatever we don't use goes to a turbine generator and we generate electricity, generally in the, the range of five megawatts or so. So we'll, we'll be a power produce, producer and that power can be used internally in the plant or it can be put back onto the grid as a, as a green type power. And that's pretty much the process.
Can I interrupt you, I just want to ask, what are your emissions and how is that monitored?
Pretty much emissions are monitored like any other industrial process, for any stacks where you have air emissions, you'd have particulate monitors, probably sulfur dioxide monitors and, yeah, NOx monitors, so there is all of that. The, because we're taking most of the emissions that come from the gasification and using it as our syn gas, they're fairly minor at that point, but there are, there's an auxiliary boiler and a few other potential emissions points throughout the plant. The other emissions that need to be categorized are what's called fugitive emissions, so that's any leakage from tanks where you might get some hydrocarbon vapors, that sort of thing, and those all need to be monitored and categorized and, and there's an EPA standard for how you do that.
And just to interject one thing, any plant process like this produces CO2, it's just part of the process. So one of the ways that we're going to minimize a lot of refiners, you know, just, just admit it, bet it, but we're going to feed that to specially designed algae that we can, we're working with the School of Mines in Denver and so, so one of the things that happens when you have an extreme forest fire is that the ground is scorched and sterilized and trees really don't grow again. So what I'm asking them to do is to come up with an algae that can be used as a soil amendment, we feed the CO2 to the algae, then we use that soil amendment to restore the nutrients to those bird scar areas and then we will, part of our nonprofit aspect, sponsor the replanning of trees.
Thank you, Linda Rose, I think we would appreciate anything you would do to minimize emissions and environmental impact, appreciate that.
There'll also be some solid waste and liquid waste as well, that'll have to be dealt with.
Yeah.
It is a large industrial process, so it's not, it may be green, but it's not perfect. Our engineering team, we've retained Black and Beach to do the, what's called the FEED that stands for front end engineering design. It's kind of the final stage of engineering to de-risk the process and then they'll move into a role as the EPC to do the engineering procurement and construction for the project. Black and Beach is a world-class engineering firm and builder and very respected in the renewable energy field. They also have the most experience with the type of technology that we'll be using, so they're, they're a very good choice for that. We've also retained a Respect Environmental on our Colorado Springs to provide the environmental assessment, initial ESA reports and site studies, so they'll be starting on that fairly quickly here. You'll see the phrase FEL1, may or may not be familiar with it, it's the, the government many years ago decided they needed a way of de-risking projects, so they created this FEL1, FEL2, FEL3. The FEL stands for front end loading and it's basically you do a certain amount of engineering to de-risk and then you get to what they call a stage gate where you look at that engineering to date, you, you analyze the risk and the cost and determine how you move forward to keep minimizing project risk. So FEL1 is the very beginning of that process and it runs all the way through FEL5 basically, which is starting construction on the project. So we, we've gotten through the FEL1 stage, we've engaged the engineering firms, we've gotten contracts for offtake of the fuel commitments on the biomass and we're in the citing process. So that, that basically takes us to the end of FEL1 and what we're starting now is FEL2, which is continuing the engineering, looking at permitting, environmental aspects, anything that could come up as a potential project killer, transportation, doing analysis of things like truck traffic and impacts that would have to the community, sound, odor, any, any sort of impacts of that sort. So that, that's the, the stage we're starting into now and that will continue, not only in FEL2, but on through FEL3 as well.
And a quick question on that, and I think Mayor, if you don't mind.
No.
So as far as your shipping goes, I know ultimately you're hoping to use the rail and develop adjacent to that, will there be trucking as well?
There will be some, we're not certain at this point if any biomass will come in by truck, the, the intent is to bring it all in by rail at this point and all the product going out will likely go by rail because it's, it's essentially bulk fuels.
The idea is to minimize the impact on the community.
But there's, there will be supplies and other deliveries and.
And during construction, of course.
And construction impacts, so all that needs to be looked at.
Have you all had conversations with the NSF and thought about getting a rail spur and everything that would need?
That's part of what, yes, and we've estimated what the cost is, we're trying, we're trying to use some of the. We're trying to use some of the earlier work before we talk to BNSF. But I've gotten a contact name, Phil Rico, who's nice enough to do that.
We've also talked to some of the local short lines about their providing access, especially as you get further out where BNSF doesn't have any interest in those tracks.
Okay.
FELI Three is the next stage after we finish FELI Two. This is really where sort of the final major de-risking of the project occurs. Significant amount of the engineering is completed at this point. It's where we get firm pricing from all of the suppliers and vendors and our EPC contractor, Black &amp; Veatch, will also provide an engineering contract at the end of FELI Three as well. So that's sort of the really big step. After FELI Three, then we move into detailed engineering design and eventually site preparation and construction.
What does FELI stand for?
Front-end loading. Again, it's a government term, but it's sort of gotten common usage now among the consulting engineering community.
You can sit down for a minute. We're taking turns. So one of the best benefits I think most of you are aware of for the community are the jobs. So there will be quite a lot of construction jobs that's shorter term. Long-term, we have about 93 permanent jobs and I believe, I've had quite a lot of management experience, and I believe that if you treat your people like they're family and they're part of the endeavor, they pay you back. So we're going to be really good to our people, make sure they're safe and give them opportunities for growth in their careers. So this is the jobs breakdown. I believe I provided this to you separately, but these are all the jobs that we will have. So we're hoping that we can source as locally as possible. We want to source the jobs from Colorado, but better yet, southern part of the state where we are right now. So the annual economic impact is going to be significant. Just the salaries alone for employers will be 9.4 million. And when people have nice salaries and we're going to pay them well at the higher end of the scale for any particular job, they have money to spend. And the jobs multiplier impact, are you familiar with that concept? Is very high for a project like this. There are a lot of different industries that have to support it. We're going to have 24/7 operation of a pot like this because it's really expensive to take it down and you don't shut it down at night. So that means we need food service. And there will need to be an increase in banking, legal, medical, uniforms, maintenance, entertainment. People will have more money to spend, they'll want to go places, they'll want to dine. And one of the things I'm definitely opposed to, my daughter and I are both like this, we avoid chains. So we want local, you know? I will do everything possible. If you need somebody to fight with you, keep big box stores out of here, I'm your person. So, you know, but I love the idea of more great restaurants and movie houses, et cetera. That's what we're hoping. So we're not asking for a tax abatement. We want to pay our fair share of taxes. If there are any other ways you think of at this stage, is when we could use your help, we would be extremely receptive to any ideas, your help. So Dan, would you talk about the environmental?
Yeah, I think we already mentioned a little bit the emissions, but it's fairly low emissions from the plant. Again, all the gasification of the wood goes to the syn gas, which is eventually our final product going into the fuels we're producing. The auxiliary boiler that only runs during startup and shutdown will have some emissions and probably the biggest emissions, air emissions of concern would be the fugitive type emissions. And that's really a matter of controlling, making sure your gaskets aren't leaking and you have proper venting on your tanks.
Dan, can you kind of explain to all of us what fugitive emissions means?
Yeah, it's kind of leaks in the system. It's if you have a big tank full of diesel fuel, for instance, that has fumes and if you don't control those fumes, they can get out of the tank and just go into the atmosphere. The EPA frowns on that, of course, and recommends special types of vents on the tanks that control those emissions and that sort of thing. Valves tend to be a source of fugitive emissions because they're a moving part in the line. Their gaskets always start leaking after so many cycles. And so there's a program that the EPA recommends plants of this type have called an Eldar program. It's leak detection and repair. And it's a methodology of using sniffers to go out to every valve in the plant on a regular cycle and just sniff it and see if it's leaking. If it is, it goes onto a maintenance list and gets taken care of. So there's mitigations for it, but it's kind of a fact of life in these large plants that gaskets wear and things do leak occasionally.
That's why we do routine maintenance, take the pipe down so many days a year to do upgrades and cleaning, et cetera.
Restoring forest health, again, as Lynda Rose talked about, the using the algae as a way of restoring the health. Also, the ash itself is very high in minerals and so the ash from the process can be spread on the forest floor as well to restore the health of the forest. Avoided GHDs that's basically by using the wood for a recyclable purpose, in this case a renewable fuel, that prevents the release of CO2 or CO2 equivalents due to burning or other issues. So that avoids a certain amount of greenhouse gas emissions, which is what GHDs stand for. I'm sorry, there's a lot of three-letter acronyms in this business. After a while, you get so used to them, you forget not everybody is familiar with them.
Just tell our earth, there's something we want to split, because, you know, we get in our own little bubble here. So the impact of the Forest Service grant is significant, but it's more than just the money. They really understand us in very detailed fashion. The person who makes the decisions, I've known her personally for a couple of years, and she's the one that pointed me to Dan Dallas and the Rio brand as the forest she wanted us to work on. So having them in our corner is tremendous. They really need this to be a success. So as a result, that kind of validation is opening doors, which is wonderful. I had a virtual meeting with an officer at the Colorado Clean Energy Fund who said she believes she can get us approval for a loan up to a million initially and more to follow. She's having a meeting with her team on Thursday. So I think I sent an email to you all saying if you want to talk to her, talk to her. Say, put in a word, you know? So the easy part of the project to finance is after we've completed FELI Three because then we're ready to start building, right? And it's been de-risked. So at that point, we can qualify for, if we want to go that route, DOE long guarantees up to 90% of the cost. So we can work with any commercial bank and they will guarantee 90% of the loan. They'll want some equity piece as well. The hard part is right now because we have that de-risking yet to do. So this is our next mountain to climb. And so to get to that phase costs $20 million. We're looking in all directions for help with that. So if you know anybody who'd like to minimize their tax liability, there's an organization that we're working with now. It's called AVIC. I'll get you the contact information if you're interested, but they broker tax credits from projects like ours. So they calculated that per year, this project will generate approximately 26 million in tax credits, which can be purchased. And they said that it's possible to get advanced purchase of tax credits. We're on their website. I think I, didn't I send you a link to that saying we're live on this website? So that's the one. So there might even be a bridge loan available for investors like this to get us to the construction phase. So we're hustling, we're trying to find it. So any state, local, national financial support that you can think of, we're happy to, we would be grateful for that.
Lynda Rose, sorry to interrupt you, but do you have some funding already secured, correct?
Well, we've received a grant from the Forest Service. And we are talking to investment banks to raise this. We've had several different parties say they would like to do it, but until we get a contract and we have a date certain, we're going to keep looking.
So is 20 million what's left to be raised for the project or is that...
That's to complete FELI Two and Three. Lots of engineering time, all the permits, the detailed engineering design work, all that has to be done, the site work. And it's in our executive summary exactly what that's being used for, all the tasks that are required. That doesn't go to me, that goes to engineers. So this is some information we'd like to talk about. So in terms of the site, David Barak, did he, I guess he went, so he printed out some maps for us and the site we were looking at, which is this one, it's in a watershed and I think it's probably not a good site. We don't want to mess with any of that. So I think we need to go back to the drawing board and I could, is Nick Mason?
Is Nick here today?
He is. Do you want to go get him?
Yeah, could you see if he's around? He's been helping you all through the rides.
He almost spotted me exactly.
So David and Joe Tarabino, whom I met earlier today, just, I mean, he's an adorable person, I didn't say that, but he's really something. Anyway, so they did a lot of work. They came up with some other alternate, they don't own them, they're just trying to help us, sites that might be good. They're further north, but, you know, we do need that rail access and the infrastructure. So I'm going to go back. So let's talk about the water. Your water manager?
Mark.
Mark, yes. I was on a virtual meeting with you, I believe, some time ago and he said that you could do this. We just want to make sure that's the case.
Yeah. Mayor Council, we met with EcoTech earlier, probably almost a year ago plus at this point to talk about your water demands and we feel very confident that we can meet their needs, but not sacrifice future water needs and other use of water in our community.
That's great. And in my conversation earlier today with David Barak and Joe, Tarabino and Jeff, we will take guidance from the water manager on what to do with the irrigation quality of water that we discharge. Where would you like it? Where should we put it? How could it be useful for irrigation or what? So I know Colorado laws about water are kind of weird, but let's see if we can find a good use for that, right?
And Mayor Council, to Lynda Rose's point, so the water we would provide to EcoTech, my understanding is you would use it for multiple cycles of your process, correct?
Yes, right.
But then when it's discharged, it is irrigation quality?
We will do some cleanup and desalination because it's used primarily for cooling. And interrupt me if you have anything more to say about that. So it does need to be cleaned up and we will treat it.
Yeah, it comes from a number of different sources within the plant. We actually generate some water of our own as well. And as much as possible, we'll try to recycle it internally because it makes sense, obviously. But at some point, we do get contaminated to where we have to discharge. And in that case, it'll go to a wastewater treatment plant onsite and then from there to, we'll have to figure out what to do with it.
And we'll take guidance from your team and the water manager.
Yeah, and Mark and Bill and I have already had some conversations on that. We want to get creative on how we can reuse that water for non-durable, you know, applications.
Absolutely, yeah.
Could it be used for recreational?
We could, it's possible that we could bring it to even a drinkable. It'd cost more.
Yeah, money.
You know, yeah, it's pretty expensive to bring it to that level, but, you know, where would it be transported?
Falling swimming pools or something like that, yeah.
You want some recreational areas on the site?
Sure.
Employ break time, right?
Not sure about that. Maybe a trout pond or something might be workable.
That's an idea. Well, let's, again, let's be creative here, guys.
And Mayor Council, to me, on the recreation side would be to figure out a reuse system where we could irrigate some of our parks, the golf course, that type of stuff.
Absolutely. We just have to figure out what the transportation would be for that, but...
It's expensive to transport it, but once that's in place, then we have a sustainable, you know, water source.
And it'll be free. We're not going to charge anybody for it. So of course, right?
We like free at this city.
Free's a good price.
So are there any other questions you have about infrastructure?
No, I think everything else is fairly straightforward. The power is still a really rough number that needs to be fine-tuned with the engineering we're doing.
You guys, Nick Mason in the audience right there.
Oh, good, hi. Do you mind if I address him?
No.
So Nick, thank you so much for coming up. Can you sit over here, maybe?
Scooch up, you big old...
So the site that we were looking at, the Tarabino site, I just had it out? Yeah. So it's got a watershed going right through it, which would not be good. We don't want to put a watershed there for a number of reasons. So David Barak and Joe took the time and effort to come up with some other sites. So this is something they found out, this site right here and this parcel. So can we figure out, maybe you can make a copy of that? Let's see if we can figure out who that is because they thought it would be a good place. But we are hoping that wherever we land, that we can be, that you would be willing to annex that site so we can be part of the city. Is that...
Yeah. And Mayor Council, just for background information, I've asked Nick to help EcoTech with looking at available land options as much as we can, as in our purview.
Excuse me, where is that site located? Is that the interstate to the left?
It is.
The two red lights?
Yeah, but we can't, we can't, we're not going to use it because we don't want to interfere with the watershed. And it's, there's a creek or something running right through there. It's not...
Are the other parcels in close proximity to that one?
They're above the industrial site, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, just to the north.
Mayor Council, give me a second. We can pull up the map and kind of...
Sure. All we had left was questions and we don't need anything of ours to go for that.
Okay, great.
Who's going to do the Mondo pad when you're gone, Steve?
I'll zoom in.
So is that location in the industrial park?
The one I showed is not.
It's not?
No, and it may actually be agricultural zoned and we don't want to interfere with any agriculture or prime agricultural land. We'd like something that can be zoned as heavy industrial.
I checked out our industrial park was set up for that.
Well, is there land there that we can, we can...
It's all sealed up.
Is it all...
What about Commerce Park? We don't have anything in Commerce Park.
Is it all spoken for?
Steve, no, I got it. We are, we're looking at that and I believe you were talking to the folks with Love's for that parcel that they own a significant amount and they don't need it all.
He's not followed up with me.
Okay. We will keep helping with that as well.
Okay. Yeah, that plot would be fine.
Significant watershed through there as well.
Through the one?
Through Love's.
Oh.
It's one more significant belonging from them.
Really?
Yes. There's going to be, there's going to be quite a few watersheds.
So how would we, how would we work around that watershed area?
Well, there's always mitigations. If you're, if you're taking over a significant watershed, you usually have to mitigate and put in something else to...
Yeah, historically, you just have, you just have to keep the flow, your discharge less than historically. So that's, and that's kind of, that's all... So that's, and that's kind of, that's the city's standard for CDOs.
So is there any way we could... Okay. I'm not a land use person, so I couldn't really provide any...
You could always put a pond.
Yeah, I mean, we actually have that anyway, but, but so how...
You wouldn't want to...
You have a lot going on here. Is there anything else?
Oh, okay, we can, we can, we can take this outside.
But like to conclude the presentation and then, and then we will loan you, Nick Mason, a lot of things.
Thank you, that's a good idea. Did anybody have questions for us about that?
Mayor Council, Nick will keep working with them on finding land, and we're actively engaged here.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good, thank you.
I have, I have a, I mean, I'm really interested in this. Thank you so much for bringing something of this scale. Linda Rose, it's been a long time, but we've spoken on the phone some time ago, so thank you.
I remember your face. I think I saw you on one of the meetings that...
Right, and then we had some conversation on the phone. So first off, thank you for that time, and thank you for the, I'm sure, incalculable hours that you've put into this. I have a lot of questions, but I mean, I don't think it's going to further dialogue at all, so...
Feel free to send them to me by email if you like, because you have my contact.
Right, okay, thank you. But I would say, and I think I speak for all council, hopefully, I, we stand ready to help and do what's necessary to bring this boon to our community. So thank you for the effort you're putting in.
We appreciate that.
I know you mentioned the EPA earlier. Do you have an in-house version of that that is separate from the EPA, like a mock in-house quality assurance in your organization?
At the moment, I'm handling most of that, but as we grow the organization, we will be putting that together to have our own in-house environmental department to manage and maintain all the issues that always come up with facilities like this.
We'll be required to have that, to operate the plant.
Do you have any questions?
I actually don't. I just, I can tell the amount of work that you're putting into this. Highly appreciate bringing it to the community as well, and can't reiterate that enough. The least we can do is help you track down some land that you can use.
Thank you. No, you've all been just unbelievably wonderful and helpful, and I so appreciate that. It means a lot. Because a project like this is a heavy lift, and, you know, like I said, we can't do it on our own. We need help. We have to, we have to have a community that supports the idea, so...
Could you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Did you get our email address so you can send any follow-up?
I think we...
You can share it with?
Oh, I can pull that back up.
Their emails have been down for a while, and so, I mean, by a while, I mean for a really, really long time. No, right, which is like a real long time. So you may want to send your email again, if you don't mind, like when the email was up and running, which we're told is going to be tomorrow, hopefully.
Okay.
But if you want to pull it up one more time, Linda Rose, we'll make sure we write it down, please. No, it's okay.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Just out of curiosity, how are your biofuels stored in winter because they're more sensitive to lower temperatures than regular fossil fuels?
Actually, these are what are called drop-in equivalents. And chemically, they're virtually identical to conventional diesel or conventional jet fuel. So there really isn't any significant difference. The differences are very subtle, very minor. It's not like biodiesel, where biodiesel will gel at a much higher temperature than diesel fuel will. This is, this actually is diesel fuel, it's just made from trees rather than from petroleum pumped onto the ground.
What's most interesting to me about this is the jobs potential for this community. And what particular kinds of STEM jobs would people need to be preparing for? I mean, it's going to take years likely to do this, but if we have kids in this community who are hoping to work with you, what kind of jobs would they be preparing for?
Many kinds. So obviously maths, science, chemistry, engineering, but also management, business. I'm actually, we're actually looking to recruit a CFO, Chief Financial Officer, sorry, allergies are not great here.
Technicians as well, like we'll need instrument techs, we'll need mechanical techs, so two-year type degrees with a focus on various industrial categories, might be electrical, might be instrumentation.
Even welding.
Yeah, welding, exactly.
Have you, this may be really premature, but it would be a great idea for you to sit down with the president of our college and to talk with them about what programs they have available and what they've been thinking of offering in the next few years.
Thanks to Phil Rico. I did make contact and had a call with one of the people over there, but yes, we need to continue that.
Great. Otherwise, I'm just, I've been hearing a lot about this now for a few months, and I'm really glad to understand it better. I think it's a very good fit for this community in that we do have water and we do have...
It's a big one.
A lot of messy forest.
Yes.
And I just wish you all and hope I can, in any way I can help.
Thank you so much, and feel free to send me emails with ideas and whatever comes to mind. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So just go on with about your business and thank you again.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I have two more questions to run you through things. So the first question is, you talked about the Rio Grande Forest, but I would assume you would look for local de-forestation here as well.
Oh, yes. Your water manager said he needs help with his watershed.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, we're here to solve all those problems.
Okay, perfect. And I think Linda Rose, you and I talked, and what about household yard waste? I mean, just local things where we can contribute organic material, is that an option?
If it's not too wet, because we'd have to dehydrate it.
Okay.
But sure, somebody's cutting their trees or trimming trees or whatever, yeah.
So that might be a really nice partnership for us to explore.
Sure. So your sanitation department can just haul that stuff to our plant?
Okay, so that's good. And then last question I had was, so I assume, you know, the client for your product, and I just want to make sure everyone's clear, so are you producing a final product here?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay.
It's sustainable aviation fuel, and I, we just briefly mentioned the offtake, but so both United and Delta have said they'd like exclusive right to purchase it because they're desperate to reduce their greenhouse gas, their carbon footprint, right? What we're going with at this time, unless Southwest comes in and decides to be our equity partner, I'm trying to reach those guys, but is AEG Fuels, and that's all caps, AEG Fuels. So they are a major logistics and fuel provider for all the major airlines, and they can get us a really good price. So they can, so they will take possession of an FOB plant. So it's theirs once it's on their oil tankers, fuel tanker cars. And they'll take it up to the other, you know, whatever airports they want. We don't worry about it. They'll put it in their fuel terminals and blend it as they wish.
Okay. Do you foresee any private sector investment in what you're trying to accomplish here?
We would love to have private sector investment. I think it's early stages for us to figure out, you know, who might be interested, but we would be thrilled if there were, you know, Colorado partners.
Okay, thank you.
We're also working with DA Davidson, which is an investment bank, but they don't seem to have a real good fix. They can place a private bond for this, but they don't seem to have a really good fix on the Phil two and three money, the 20 million. So that's the, that's what we're working on right now.
I have a question, I just thought about. I've got a lot, I mean, I'm not techno savvy enough to understand, you know, the really intense questions to ask, but have you ever, have you contacted the state at all for any kind of assistance, like with our state representative here in our area, or the governor's office, or Colorado Economic Development for any of this stuff?
I think we need some intros to that. We've talked to the USDA, the rural energy people, but they couldn't give us much help. The Colorado Clean Energy Fund is local, and they seem really excited about it. And they, you know, she was very enthusiastic about participating. But no, we don't, is there something like Quick Start or Startup or some other kind of...
Well, and Mayor Council, we did have some conversations about OEDIT, which is the state Office of Economic Development. My recollection is the grants that they offer are for businesses that already exist.
Right.
Or are close to opening, but we will definitely have conversations with Echo Tech and try to plug them in with our connections as well. That's a really good point.
Having Ms. Myers get in contact with our state representative.
Absolutely, that'd be a good thing.
I win.
So we will be here all week. We can, if anybody wants to talk to us again, I'm staying at the Days Inn. I'm not sure Renan is staying.
Same place. Same place.
Poor guy. He's had like four hours and two days sleep, right? I'm amazed he could put two words together. But yes, please, please do call on us. We're here for you. So take advantage.
We're hard to make those connections.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
How about Nick Mason, everybody?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, you big old...
That's you. So, hey, the last item on our work agenda, work extension agenda, is pickleball against Mr. Chow.
Yeah. I was wondering who that handsome man is.
Thank you, absolutely. Mayor, member of council, I apologize, we're all under the same no email thing, so unfortunately, a lot of the information I'm going to have to hand to you, you can have it pretty easily sorted out.
No problems.
So a quick recap on pickleball, you'll see in your little packet there. Pickleball design done by our engineering department, and then several quotes from sports courts of the Rockies, and then a quote from Renner. So a little bringing it up to speed, when we determined that we should explore Los Ninos Park for the size of the pickleball courts, I asked our engineering firm to design for you six courts. Six courts is using the standard in order to give a whole pickleball tournament. So they did that, and once they had completed that, our researches sports courts of the Rockies, they were the pickleball companies we'd been working with when we had discussed the site at the high school. They are a source or a source well contractor, which means that we can contract directly with them. And they provided the first quote that you see for a total of 430,000 plus some to build those courts that you see designed in front of you at Los Ninos Park. They also, just because he was curious, the individual working with now at sports courts of the Rockies is the owner, he was not the person we've been dealing with prior, so he came down, wanted to see all the discussion that was being had, so he wanted to see the high school, I took him there, then we went to Los Ninos. And so just, he had provided a quote for the courts at the high school, just as a reference, mostly just as a courtesy. So that's also there for your, for your reference. And then the pickleball group here had asked or suggested that we get a quote from Renner. Renner is another sports court developer. The quote is mostly on tennis courts, but are now obviously the pickleball court. And they provided just a real quick quote, kind of a last minute thing, and that's the quote that you see, the very last quote, for $300,000 roughly. The big difference in the quote is that Renner only does the final, they do not do the engineering or the site prep. So they recommend that whoever they're working with, take care of that aspect of the project, and then they come in and do the slab and do everything else above that. So other municipalities who are in that same situation, their on-call engineering firm to do the site prep and the site engineering, it's roughly been about $150,000. So you have to add about between $120,000 to $150,000 on top of that $300,000 to get you the full project. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at. And just as an FYI, the, our architery group, the group who's working on the river development, when I told them that they might have to kind of back off of that aspect of the project because pickleball courts may be going there, they suggested, I mean, we consider a little bit of a different location, so to ask not to interfere with their design of what they wanted to do along the Riverwalk area, so just as an FYI. But really, that's pretty much where we're at on the project. We do have a design, we do have quotes. We are, so the budget that Cheryl had set aside for this project originally was $360,000. We have spent $6,000 of that on the, in geotechnical, so we have a budget of about $354,000. So to move forward in either direction, we're down about $60,000, $60,000, $70,000 in the budget to move forward with the project. So pretty much that's what I have for you as a council. Really, I'm, and the city is looking for direction from you as to how we would like to proceed.
So the little bit different that the architect, the architec, I don't know if anyone can remember, who were doing the Riverwalk design?
Oh, architery group, yes, yes.
Is that precluding putting them at Los Ninos or moving with in a different part of Los Ninos?
I really, we didn't really get to have that much of a conversation. I think he would probably be fine to keep them at Los Ninos, just not necessarily right where they're at, because his preliminary design had shown their actual removal of the basketball court and the little park that's there now and extending into Los Ninos Park with part of, it was kind of like a trailhead area there and expanded aesthetics. So to see a brand new facility going right into where they had designed something else created a little concern for him. But I don't think that meant that he didn't want them there as in Los Ninos Park, he didn't want them like right there. Does that answer your question?
So would that, do you think that would, if we had to move them from this, decided Los Ninos, we had to move them from this, is that going to add more money to figure out additional engineering?
It, I don't think it would really affect the cost of the sports courts quote, because that's all inclusive and that'd be there. It would probably affect the quote from Renner as far as site. And we could, and this is just a complete assumption, I don't, our engineering department may be able to design the dirt work, may be able to, I don't know if our public works department has the capability of doing the site prep. I mean, that would definitely be a cost savings, but just from other municipalities having gone and asked their on-call engineer to do that, it's been over $100,000.
And Mayor Council, I've already had that conversation with Mr. Jess, we could do at least the design work in-house, so that would save us a significant... And Mayor Council, I've already had that conversation with Mr. Just, we could do at least the design work in-house, so that would save us a significant amount of money.
Well, there's not really a big discrepancy with either of, it seems like the site preparation at Los Ninos and the performance system is pretty uh, equal. But like, I think the consensus of the council before, we were adamantly against that Truett High School site. I like the Los Ninos site and see if we can come up with the other sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I, just to be clear, I'm not pushing the high school, it was just a quote.
Right, it's just, yeah, just a reference point.
Yeah, so.
And Mayor Council, if I can just talk to the other sixty thousand real quick, we have about a hundred thousand dollars, a little more in our water refunding, which can be used for recreational purposes. Um, Karen Wolf is, um, hopefully going to put the bid out for the skate park, the rebid, um, pretty soon. Um, I'm hoping that comes in a little bit, you know, reasonable and cheap-ish, uh, but still with a qualified contractor. And any savings we have out of that hundred thousand for that project, we could definitely put into this project, so that would be a, a good use of that.
So anything after thirty days that we're not in agreement, does that price change with the site preparation and the performance?
It, it could be that those quotes are, I don't.
Are they're not locked in?
They're not locked in right now that they will change over the thirty day quote period. I don't anticipate a tremendous uh, difference. Um, in fact, prices could go down, it doesn't necessarily really gonna go up. Um, that's just the quote that we have.
That's what I had.
Uh, my biggest concern is where we're gonna get, I mean, the sixty thousand.
Yeah.
I, that's a big issue. We, we don't have a lot of money as it is and we have projects that we, I want us, just one example, is those RQ were sitting back there, they need some work down there too. So, I mean, that's a big issue, other than that, sure.
Hi.
Hello.
Just a question on this, so the, this court that I'm looking at the surface, is that the only surface that he's offering?
So there, and that's actually a great question. So Renner does what you consider your traditional tennis court surfacing. Um, sports court is a tile interlocking surface, and so they warranty their surface up to fifteen years. Which, you get into some very colorful conversation depending on who you're talking to about which surface is better and what people like to play on and the maintenance of the surface and longevity. Um, each has their pros and cons, you might say. Um, the advantage of the tile system is it makes repair of the subsurface very easy and that's initially why we had gone with them when we were talking about the high school tennis courts, cause it was a refurbishing of the subsurface and including the tile application on top. Um, there's no reason necessarily with a brand new, um, facility that we would have to go with that, just that the warranty is much longer, um, and those people who are proponents of it like playing on it because it's got some give, it's got some traction, you can play on it when it's wet, whereas a tennis court, you have to wait for it to dry because of the tile, the water goes through and you can play on it immediately. If there is something on the subsurface, if there is some sort of cracking or something, you pull up the tile, you patch it, you put the tile right back on and it's, it's good to go, whereas a tennis court starts to crack, you've got bigger issues.
The whole thing.
Yeah, that's wrong.
Now, the other question that I had on that, um, so, it's just the kind of, I got lost, sorry.
No.
Sorry. You triggered my E D D, sorry.
No, it's your, it's your.
Okay, sorry.
I have heard both from, from.
So just asking Jared if our, our community has a preference on the surface.
I, I have heard both and I've actually even had the same question at the uh, the park and rec directors meeting for the southern area. I've thrown it out there in conversation with them and it's mixed responses. It just really depends more on as a, as a owner of the facility, what we want to deal with. Because what we've determined is you're not gonna make anybody really ever happy in the pickleball world as far as surface. It'll make some people happy, other people won't be happy and go back and forth. So as far as we as the owners of the facility, what is it that we want to have?
Cause I think as of right now, they're going through and they're playing on just concrete right now on the basketball, on the basketball one. And I'm looking at this design here and so we're, we're keeping the basketball courts.
Right, and was this design right here, we're keeping the basketball court and the playground?
Okay, so now being it with that, that we're actually creating a park direction is, um, I got to talk to, uh, who's Chris Goco today?
No, I am.
Yeah, so great guy.
Chris O'Callaghan.
Yeah, he gave us some great ideas, he's like, he goes, if we have, we can be more, cause we can be, they consider us a lot more, we have a wow factor. Apparently, that's what it is. So, you know, and he kind of suggested something pretty cool was, um, since we don't have one, is like an outdoor pavilion, like a family pavilion to kind of give it that now we'd have a compound to have pickleball basketball, cause we, I was anticipating just pickleball on the basketball courts.
Right, I hear you going.
So being that, looking at it like this, it's, we're creating a whole new park.
Well, see, and this is where architery group with the design, cause this is all part of that Riverwalk design. They would really like to be involved in that conversation, cause if we're gonna really develop it into like a sub park or something like that, they'd really like to have some say in that, so they can incorporate it with the river design that they're working on too.
Yeah, and see, since I'm looking at it this way here, uh, it looks like we're designing it down the Riverwalk, right? Or is it coming up toward the soccer field?
It, it comes down, so it goes east along the Riverwalk and then south into Los Ninos Park.
Oh, okay.
So it kind of goes.
So is that why they think we're kind of going into their area?
Well, cause initially before, they started their design before we started the conversation of having the pickleball down here. So they did a whole, like, the, the tennis, the, the basketball court is kind of getting old. The, the park, the, the playground equipment is really actually, there's some liability issues with it now that really needs to be removed. So their plan was, we'll just remove all of that and totally design this cool Riverwalk aspect in that area before pickleball showed up. Now the pickleball's coming, they wanted to have some sort of conversation just to incorporate what they had planned.
I'm just pulling up the map here in case.
Can't see my house.
So pickleball is designed to go pretty much, um, I, I, I at first suggested to engineering that it totally filled this corner, so we didn't have to fill the chunk. But when they were doing the design, they said it was better to have pickleball come right up to the edge of where the basketball was to save with like ADA access and convolution of sidewalks. It was easier just to have a straight line coming all the way down from the basketball court along. Pickleball, it made it a lot easier as far as ADA sidewalk construction and such like that. So there is a little gap right back here, it would be on the backside of the fencing of the, the pickleball courts. So, but yeah, that's, so according to what architery group had designed, with all this back here would be basically kind of like a mini park. Uh, a trailhead area, just a way to kind of have some designated access to the river, uh, kind of like a rest stop area along the trail. Um, and so that's why they kind of got their feelings hurt when I told them, hold off on that. Cause, you know, we, we might have something going in here that we don't want to consider removing as part of, you know, design as they had planned to remove this area.
And Jared, the Riverwalk visioning, will remove the basketball courts as well?
So yeah, the, and when I saw they were gonna take out basketball court, playground, and it was like a little s- trail that would come here with a, a pavilion and just kind of make it a nice little hangout spot along the river.
You know what, Jared, but you know, in the original plans, concrete and rubber are more expensive than clay. There's a lot of clay tennis courts and pickleball courts, have you guys looked into clay surfaces?
I have. You're honest, that's a great question, I've never seen a clay pickleball court.
But there's clay tennis courts.
But there are.
What I'm saying is clay is cheaper than rubber and concrete.
That's true, it tends to have more maintenance though, cause clay is subject to erosion and wind and such like that, whereas.
And it is outdoors.
And it is.
Yeah. Yeah, cause I think the pickleball regulation, if we're wanting to host tournaments and stuff, they, it's like a concrete asphalt or, or the tile.
Yes.
So the soccer field isn't regulation, right? And that's, and that's kind of an issue. So that location's kind of just, kind of just sitting there, right?
So, uh, I'll, I'll turn it over to Steve as far as long, long-term plans.
So, uh, Mayor Council, not to get too in the weeds, but um, right now, my understanding is the soccer field is not regulation, so it really impacts a lot of play on it. Um, to me, this would be a good area for us to really think about in the future for, if we ever did get to a point where we were building a, a new rec center, um, even a new city hall, I think we don't have a lot of space downtown. This area to me makes a lot of sense to really think about for, for a whole future use.
Yeah, but i- if we had that as an entrance, if we're doing a rec center, then that would become our outdoor recreation site. But like I said, without developing an entire rec center and a pickleball court at the same time. But as I was saying, if they're gonna gut all that out of there, then are we thinking that? I'm not, I wasn't here for Riverwalk conversations. So like on the Riverwalk projects, do we, we're paying for that?
We're looking at funding right now, but yes, um, so we're, we're paying for the design out of the existing budget and then the construction costs would be, um, something that the city ultimately would be responsible for.
Okay, cause I just wondered, cause I was like, if we're, if they were doing it and they were, it was a different thing, you know, since we're paying for it, the alterations.
Right, yeah.
But that section of the Riverwalk is not the section that we're concentrating on now. We're concentrating animus to commercial, correct?
Correct, now they, and Jared can correct me if I'm wrong, but they are designing, um, the full vision of the Riverwalk as well as part of the design. Um, the, I would say phase one is exactly what you're talking about, Mayor, so I had twenty-five to commercial.
And what's all that dead space in between, do we own any of that?
No.
Like this area here?
No, like over here where the little trail, the road is.
Oh.
All that dead space.
Yeah. We do not own that, we would like to acquire.
We, we own the other side of where the old smokehouse is.
Oh, okay. Cause it says it's right off the street and that's great access.
It's right next to the, uh.
Yeah, so we in development meetings, we would love to look at maybe securing that land for a parking lot or just expanded use. Um, we do own this piece of property right here, which is where we'll be developing our new public works building and then this is our gas department headquarters right here as well. So, um, that, this building, the old smokehouse is going to be developed, I believe, into a chiropractor.
Bill's not there no more.
But we would definitely like to, um, look at acquiring this land at, at some point in the near future as well. Um, also, as you all remember, this was our old public works. Headquarters and, and now that is owned by Kip Hamden. You know, there, there may be some opportunities in the future to look at getting that, some of that back as well.
See, I, in my personal opinion, if we still want to have, pickleball could still to work with architery group and have pickleball, I think if we were just to move pickleball a little bit farther down, still the, this space that they intended to do that, it could be, and, and really, I, I may be speaking out of turn because architery group could design the pickleball to go in here in a really more cool way than I'm even thinking. But I think they would just like to have some sort of say as we talk about design and development, how that could work in that area.
So, um, this, two hundred and ninety-six thousand and this, uh, four hundred and thirty thousand things, are these for the same projects?
They're for the same project.
Have we sent out a specific RFP?
We did initially and.
Then how in the world are we comparing apples to hand grenades here? Because this is a four foot fence, that's a eight foot fence, there's a difference of potentially sixty thousand dollars right there. Every single time we have this discussion, we use the words maybe, could, possibly, might, maybe, uh, we could think of something to do. Can we get a solid RFP put together, include something that's a wow factor, get Goco to come here, give us some money and get this off a dead center? That's what we need to do. This, I mean, our dollars are worth approximately, uh, twenty percent less if you start this project. We'd like to see it Los Ninos Park, we'd like to see it be nice for the people, if we can get Goco to do it, we should, that's all I have to say.
Will Sid?
There's one other thing, I, I, I know that when this comes to us for a decision, I'm going to want to know that architery has looked at this and has said, no, this, this either works with what we're planning or it doesn't, because there's no way that I want to get in the way of that plan when they may have some idea for, for the arrangement out there. That, I really need their buy-in.
And Mayor, if I, if I may, what Councilman O'Dooley said doesn't contradict what I've said in any fashion. I mean, we go together, that's having a solid plan with some sort of vision that will attract state funding. And it's, it, it's really regrettable, we've gotten this far in this discussion with zero action.
I mean, we're doing our due diligence, we tried the one location. The people that play, actually played pickleball were opposed to that location, so we went to Plan B. This is Plan B. My concern might be a little foolish, but by the time we get this completed, pickleball might not even be a thing anymore. So we'll have half a million dollars invested in courts that nobody's gonna use. We're gonna have to repurpose it for something else. You know, on a personal note, when we did our survey many years ago about recreational assets that the community wanted, first and foremost was an indoor swimming pool, you know, that's not possible. So the second biggest demand that I've heard is these pickleball courts. And we have been talking about it for a long time, but I think, you know, we gotta do it correctly for sure. And I think we, we need to just get a consensus from council, you know, this is the way we want to go. Los Ninos is a waste as it sits now, because if I go by there and my office is close to there and that's a secondhand dog park right now, that, that's the only use of that beautiful space. So if we can put the, any way we can get the pickleball courts there, I think we need to get started on it, you know? I, I, my concern is aesthetically, this, this site is kind of wanting for aesthetics because like, uh, Mr. Rupert said, we've got the old, um, city garage there. We've got property that's, that's owned by Kip Hamden. And I think that the pickleballers now are, are just being able to use that for parking, but that's not our property. So what big deal would it be, uh, Jared, to move the pickleball courts from where you have it situated to right across, is that Chestnut Street? That goes right there in the back?
Yeah, Chestnut Street's here, right here.
Right, right around, right adjacent to the. Right, right here.
Yeah, Mayor, right, right off of Chestnut?
We still don't have, we still don't have parking.
Well, we have parking, yeah, but we have parking on the street.
Not much, but there is some.
There, then what? And next question, why six, why not four?
Six is the standard for tournament, to host a tournament.
Oh, okay.
And Mayor, to your, your question earlier, um, when Manny and I were, excuse me, Councilman Trehio and I were at the municipality conference, um, there were a lot of discussion about pickleball. Um, I did some research as well, it's still considered one of the fastest growing sports. And then I also talked with some friends in Colorado Springs there, adding pickleball courts left and right. So I don't feel like anytime soon it's gonna go away.
Okay.
One other question. Go ahead then. Um, one other discrepancy I see between these is that the Renner, um, quote is for tournament size, which it says is thirty-four by sixty-four. As you requested, not what is shown on the city engineer's drawing. So is the city engineer's drawing not adequate for tournament play, the thirty by sixty-four?
Correct, so when engineering drew it, they didn't have quite the right specs. So actually the quote that Renner and the quote the sports court provided are quoted on standard. They, they improved what was provided by engineering, so they both quoted the exact same, but it is the pickleball standard courts.
Okay, so sports court is thirty-four. It says six at thirty by six before up here on their quote, so that's why I was wondering. That's a problem.
No, they, they should both be consistent with what the standard is. I, I gave them both the exact same information.
So you, you don't have any control about what, what the bids come back? You just send the specs and it's up to the contractor?
Yeah, I, I sent them both the exact same, this that, that engineering provided with, and actually they came back and said, these aren't standard pickleball court sizes. Instead I said, well, they can quote me according to what is accepted for tournament play pickleball court.
Because it seems like Sport Court did a far better job in the, in the bid.
They did. So, because Renner was just the last minute, they, I got a request from the pickleball group. Said, use these guys, everybody. So I said, I am going to try to make everybody as happy as possible.
Ah, you're a fool.
And it gets proved true every day. Yes, that I am. So the, the, the actual one was the one who had been working with before, who was Sports Court. Renner was just the last minute, I said, can you provide this? And they shot me. So it is not nearly as in-depth.
Understood, and I appreciate that because the gentleman that was here last week had a lot of specific questions and I'm sorry he didn't show up today. Because we could have satisfied some of those questions, but I mean, you know, if we're talking about quality courts that are going to be there for a while, I think we need to go home with the person that brought us to the dance and that's Sports Court, the Rockies.
Yeah, it would be great, Dave.
And Mayor, I mean.
I'm not going to say.
Just had another question for Councilmember Trillo. So I've talked with Mr. Obi as well a few times over the last year. And correct, that's my understanding is Goco is looking for funding large impactful projects. So I just wanted to give you a chance, when he talks about a pavilion in conjunction with it, is that like a full pickleball tournament center type of thing or what?
Maybe however we can sell it. He also stated that if we, if we were selling with an association, that they are going to be hosting these tournaments and bringing in and constantly having that flow, well, it becomes impactful. And that's what they want to hear is impactful to the community. So he also asked if we want him to come down, kind of.
I was just going to mention that, maybe that'd be a good idea to have him come present.
And for all, all Goco brands, as he said. So I was wondering whether it's, what's the requirements, what we need to have, what we need to, so we can try to. Also, I did find another grant online for us as well. It's AARP also funded, so maybe we could look at that for potential little bit of extra cash. And US Pickleball Association, I think you saw that one, they can buy two hundred and fifty dollars worth of nets.
Did you find that online or did they email that?
Yeah, I'm now an active member for some reason. I don't know why.
Well, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Council, but it's not the many part that, I mean, you know, when you look at the size of, of the contract and if Mr. Rupert says we have some funds, possibly let it work. I mean, I think it, I think the, the most important part to me is that the people that have been sitting so patiently for almost a year now to get these, this project off the ground, I think we owe it to them to do the project well for number one. But do it as quickly as we possibly can. I, I, that's, I mean, I, I see the frustration and, you know, I, I'd love to have these courts up and running next summer, next spring, March, maybe.
And, and Mayor Council, thank you for that. I, I do want to mention, I personally talk to the pickleball community too and that, that is their biggest goal, is by next season when it warms up to have availability for pickleball. So it gives us a little bit of time and couldn't agree more. Let's make this happen.
Why, why can't we, to, to Councilman Trillo's point, why can't we fund the original contract for four thirty? Start with that and then build around it and then go for Goco brands for the pavilion. Or however this project spans out or evolves. You know, I mean, it's not a one and done, but I, I know maybe I'm, I'm wrong, but I just almost feel like a sense of urgency that we've got to move on this thing, you know? And I think, you know, Mr. Chatterley spent a lot of time and I appreciate what you've done. You know, I, you, you've heard the call to, and you're trying to get everybody as happy as we possibly can. And I see, every, pickleballers want Los Ninos. We have the facility. We're only lacking ten percent of what the funding is, so, and we have availability of funds someplace else, so.
So just for your information, when I talked to the, the Sports Court gentleman, he said, should we move forward? They could have it in their project lineup to have the completed by November if we were to basically get all that back in the middle.
Do you play pickleball in November?
She's a pickleball player.
As long as it's not snowing or raining.
We did December this year, if it was a nice day.
Especially these will be much better than playing inside unless it's really cold because there's only two courts at the community center.
So the pickleball, I mean, I'm calling you an association, you're the enthusiast. Are you organized at all?
We have an app that we communicate with and we schedule times to play. But the consensus has been, we don't want to be a nonprofit. We don't want to organize and get all the, you know, filing reports and things like that. I'd like to see at least an unincorporated association with a name. You know, Raton has incorporated a charitable five oh one C three.
But the reason I ask is because it's one thing to erect these courts, it's totally another to maintain them. And it would be nice if people that use the courts would help the city keep, you couldn't keep vandals away. Try and help us maintain those courts to the best of all of our abilities. And that's kind of what I'm getting now. We would, I mean, yeah, okay. Good group, Annie.
It's just, it's, it's just plaguing me now that you said the Riverwalk because that is just freaking me out, ripping them out in some way or another. So I'm, I'm still with me and you had said about that soccer field.
Perhaps just as a recommendation, I could reach out to Architerra Group and ask them, could you design something that you, as part of what you have designed there that would incorporate the pickleball?
Because this is a beautiful design and I would hate to have them come in and really just say like, oh, what we're going to do, this part, this part, this part.
Yeah, no, they wouldn't, they, that's why I told them, it was like, we need to have this conversation now because we're not ripping out pickleball courts once they, they go away. The, the park and the basketball, well, that could be, but so, yeah, I think city, Architerra can sit down and say, as part of your Riverwalk design in this portion, we'd like to incorporate pickleball. How can you do that as a river?
How soon could we get them at the table, I suppose?
I can call them on the way out of the office.
And Mayor Council, I just want to point out, Architecta, Ar- Architecta, Architerra is, is our contractor. They work for us. So I, I really want us to kind of be the leaders on this and to me, I agree with, with the presentation where pickleball kind of makes sense on the back part of Los Ninos there. But that's not to say Architecta can't design around that and make something beautiful as well. So we'll have that conversation, but we want to be.
Are they aware of that one? I'm sure they are, of that one lot that we were talking about that we own?
Yeah.
Why couldn't they change their plans and do the roundabout or walkabout on that lot if we're, of course, we might need it for the city's purposes as well?
Yeah, we'll look at that as well, but Jared, Jared and I will get on the phone with them tomorrow and have that conversation.
Could we please have somebody set of Mr. Chatterley's documents? We can get a copy. We don't have a copy for the record. So could we please, right now? Appreciate that. And you may have heard the emails.
So what's the, what's the plan?
So with the direction from council, from city manager, I will, we will reach out to Architerra, ask them to develop some sort of plan for pickleball in that location and once that's approved by everybody, if that's okay, then we'll come back to council for approval.
And Mayor Council, what I will do is we will chop down as much of the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars as we can with our own in-house design and anywhere to contribute to the project and then look for funding to supplement. But I think the goal would be to, you know, start getting a construction contract in the next two months.
Jared, wait. What's going on with Kip Hamden's property?
I just wanted to clarify. I, I don't know that we need, I don't believe that we need Architerra to redesign something. I just want a commitment from them that if we place it here, it's not going to preclude something that they're going to. I don't want us to be in the position where like, damn it, you know, we've got to leave that thing. So that's all I'm saying.
I, I believe we'll be able to work around it, but we will have that conversation.
And Kip Hamden's not on the agenda.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know, but I'm just saying what's going on.
You could call somebody if you don't mind and just ask if you would please and we'd be happy to do that. And could I please just say that executive session tomorrow at four o'clock, because Councilman Durbin can't be there, short notice. You're, where are you on your way to?
In the eye of the hurricane.
Exactly, exactly. He's a thrill seeker. I understand. And I, I have a handout for you guys just before you go. And this is the one that you got, but I'll, I'll just give it to each of you before you.
Mr. Chatterley, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Are we all happy?
Yeah, we're as happy as we're going to be without medication.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Did we say adjourned?
Unofficially. Our meeting's adjourned.